Our first candidate is Suzanne Osborne. Is Suzanne here?
Yes, she's right over here.
Come on up Suzanne.
I'm going to be on the hotline.
All right, I'll meet you there. Bonjour, welcome.
Thank you.
We have, let me congratulate you for putting your name up, wanting to come and take on-
I'm sorry, I don't hear so well sometimes, so if you don't mind, maybe just leaning a little-
I can understand, I can identify with that myself, so, yeah, but thank you for coming forward and participating in this process, and what we're going to do, we're just going to give you two minutes to just open up and share anything that you want with us, and then each council member here will ask you a question.
Okay, well, I think I did a pretty big, long letter. I have a bachelor of science degree in education, I've taught school, I started a business thirty years ago, I'm a certified financial planner, so I have a good working knowledge of budgets and income and money and expenses. Gosh, what else? I love the Greenways, as I said in my letter, I've lived in Roanoke since nineteen seventy-three, and Roanoke has been so good to me. I mean, I've had a wonderful career here, and my children went to Patrick Henry, and so it's such a beautiful place that I just feel like that if I can do anything to give back to the community with my time, that, you know, I'm happy to do that, and I think I said in the letter that I'd be willing, you know, to serve it for a dollar or whatever you have to do to make it legal. If I could donate whatever income there is, you know, to a charity of my choice, you know, I'd be happy to do that, and I donate to Ram House, Habitat, Goodwill, I mean, you name it, disabled veterans, so I'm fairly generous, you know, I try to be to the community, so that's, I guess, about it.
All right, thank you.
Oh, we'll say one other thing, I grew up Democratic, I don't know if that, I'm sort of an independent, but I did grow up Democratic, and I voted Democratic, and I've also voted Republican, to be honest, but I try to look at both sides of an issue and really look and see, you know, what's the best for the people involved as opposed to, you know, it's a party, it's a D or an R or whatever, I try to look at both sides of that.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with the first question, and you've answered some of it in your statement, but I'll ask you again, what personal attributes do you bring to this role?
What personally do I bring?
Personal attributes do you bring to council?
Well, I think that certainly I have a really good education, I think that I bring some diversity in that I am, you know, a single white female, and I think that is always good, to have a different viewpoint and a different look at things. I'm pretty active in the community, I spend a lot of time in a lot of the areas of the city, sort of talking to friends and looking at what's going on, picking up, you know, people that help me around my property, and so I'm all over the city, I'm on Fifteenth Street, I'm on Peters Creek Road, I'm on Grandin Road, so I'm everywhere, so I see a lot of things, and I wonder, you know, how the people feel about that that live there, or, you know, so I do try to look and see what's going on in other parts of the city, not just in my own backyard.
Okay, thank you, and I'm Councilmember Sanchez Jones will have the next question.
Thank you for coming out today.
You're so welcome.
In your opinion, what should be the city's top priorities in the next one to three years?
Oh, gosh, I think that, given the fact that we have, you know, a lot of crime right now, that I certainly would say that, you know, providing the resources to our police department and the communities to address that, I mean, you can't have a, I mean, we want Roanoke to be a safe city everywhere, and people to be not, I mean, I haven't been downtown in years, simply because I've been nervous about it, I mean, I might go in the afternoon to the market or something, but I haven't been there for dinner in a long time, so I think making, you know, giving the police the money they need or the resources they need, so that we can combat, you know, crime in all parts of the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you done, Ms. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then goes the councilmember Bestbitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Suzanne for-
You're welcome.
-putting yourself forward for this-
Good to speak up a little bit for me, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm sorry. My question is, how do you define progress for the city of Roanoke? And please give an example of how you would advocate for progress for our city in a specific area.
How to find progress, well, that's a difficult question, obviously, you want, I think it's progress when you can make your city safer, I think it's progress when you can make your schools better, I think it's progress when you can minimize the homeless situation and help those people, I think it's progress when you're able to build a new library, or when you're able to pave a tennis court, all that is progress to me in terms of what the people who live in Roanoke will enjoy and use and benefit from. And what was your second part of your question, I'm sorry?
Well, how would you, any one of those that you just named, how would you see yourself advocating for progress in that one of those specific areas?
I guess it would depend on the issue, but I certainly, I would advocate a lot, this is, you're going to think this is funny, but I would advocate to get Tenth Street and Campbell fixed where that big dip is, that would be something, that's kind of a, maybe a silly answer, but I don't know really how to answer that, I mean, anything that's reasonable, that is within our budget, I mean, if it is certainly getting on board for a new park, or, you know, whatever, I'm all for anything that makes the city a more pleasant place and a safer place to live.
Thank you, that's good, thank you.
Councilmember Moon Reynolds.
Hi, thank you for coming and placing your name in for consideration, I'm going to talk up here. City of Roanoke has a council, city manager form of government.
I'm sorry, a council's-
City council has, City of Roanoke, our form of government is city council, and under that comes a city manager and the other three council-appointed officials.
Right.
And my question for you would be, how would you define your role in relationship to the council and/or with the city administration?
Well, I think that the council, obviously, the council represents the people, but we have hired some very talented people to guide us, and so certainly you want to listen to what they have to say, and I think you want to evaluate that, I don't know that you have to agree with everything, I think certainly you should question and say, well, why is this better, or can we move money from here to over here to fix this, I mean, you know, a give and take, and understanding, you know, what the constraints are and how to best use our resources to have the biggest impact on our community.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next question will come from Councilmember McColl.
Hi, Ms. Osborne.
Hey, Joe.
Welcome. So my question is this, we've been through a pretty challenging last couple of years with this pandemic, please share a challenge you see for Roanoke as we emerge from COVID-19.
Well, I see the challenge in that more people are going to be working from home, so I think that puts a lot of pressure on people that own commercial property, that maybe, you know, a tenant has a long-term lease, and now half their people are working from home, so I think that's a challenge to figure out how to minimize the impact so that a building just doesn't close, and we lose that tax revenue. I think that restaurants, you know, are obviously understaffed, people either didn't return to work because they couldn't, or they chose not to, but that puts a lot of pressure, you know, people, I see more people going out to eat, but then you have to wait so long, and the prices have gone up, oh, but that's a challenge for the whole country, not just Roanoke, but certainly those things, and then our schools, we'd like to, as being a former teacher, I would like to see our SOLs or the academic performance move up, and whatever needs to be done to help that happen, I think that's certainly something we should always, because, you know, our future is our children, so if we can't get them well-educated and involved and understand their community, and want to stay here because we have good jobs, then I think that's always a challenge for any community.
Thank you very much.
And finally, last question comes from Vice Mayor.
Hi, Ms. Osborne. My question is, how would you like, or how would you work to promote empowerment and reduce inequity among marginalized groups within the city?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to pull your mask off and talk, I'm sorry, I can't-
I'm sorry.
...understand you.
Yeah. How would you work to promote empowerment and reduce inequity among marginalized groups within the city?
Well, I think the best thing you can do is to be involved with people from all areas of the city at all walks of life, I think you begin to understand where they're coming from, and more what their needs are. I've always been one to say, not a handout, but a hand up. Teach me to fish and you feed me forever, you know, if you just give me a fish, I get one meal out of it, so I think that by helping and understanding, and by that, you can't just, you've got to kind of go there, you've got to go to that area and see what's happening, and you've got to talk to the people, and really understand their concerns, and see if there's something you can do to help them. I mean, the homeless is a terrible situation, and, you know, we have the rescue mission, and unfortunately, some of those people don't choose to take advantage of that, how do you get them to do that? I don't know, I mean, do you go and talk to them, do you say, this is available to you? Some people are beyond help, quite frankly, and no matter what you do, they're not, they're just not going to take advantage of that. It's heartbreaking, but other than educating people to their choices, and hopefully encouraging them to take advantage of that, I think that's how you try to work with areas that maybe are less fortunate.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Suzanne, that concludes all the questions we have.
Okay.
We've got a few minutes, anything else you'd like to say?
No, I don't think I have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Well, who, I know we're missing Mr. Jeffries, who else are we missing? Oh, you two are sitting down here?
Yes.
Okay, I thought there was somebody else, okay, that was my question.
Thank you. All right, we've got a little time before our 3:30 applicant comes, Ms. Preston.
Well, how are you?
Well, first of all, I always want to express our appreciation to all the candidates for putting their name forward to become, to apply for this position. We have a series of questions that each one of us will ask you, and we have a two-minute opening that we'll give you an opportunity to share some things upfront with us, and then we'll proceed with the questions, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, I want to start by saying thank you all for the opportunity to be here, I really am grateful for it. I think the majority of you know me at this point, but my name's Kaisha Preston, I'm a thirty-five-year-old single mother, I was born and raised here in Roanoke City, and in all honesty, if you had asked me about four or five years ago, or if you had told me four or five years ago that I'd be this heavily involved in local government, I probably would have laughed at you, because this is not a thing that I've ever actively aspired to do, you know, I'm not here because this is something that's on my five-year plan, I'm here because at this point it kind of feels like necessity. I've personally been impacted by things such as housing insecurity, gun violence, and poverty within the last two years, as have people who are close to me, and there have been at least a handful of instances where I've opened the paper and I've seen faces of people who have been impacted by gun violence, either they, you know, were the victim, or on one or two instances, they have been the shooter, and it's heartbreaking because, you know, these are people that I recognize because I grew up with them, or we lived in the same neighborhood, and I've kind of had the opportunity to see the chain of events that kind of led to that situation, and it's just very unfortunate because a lot of it is preventable, and so I feel like we're kind of at a point where if people like myself aren't willing to be a little bit uncomfortable and step forward into roles like this, we're really not going to see that big of a change. I feel like I'm qualified to be here, not just because of my lived experience, but also because of other work that I have done. I currently serve as Legislative Coordinator for the State of Virginia for Amnesty International USA, and in that role, I work with members of Congress, their staff, and coalition partners to help advocate for policies surrounding human rights. In 2020, I used my personal experience to write the Virginia Domestic Violence Victims Protection Act, and I changed Virginia state law to make it easier for victims of domestic violence to escape that situation and find housing. In my role as Development Director with Weston Center for Youth, I helped implement a program to address the gun violence issue here in the city surrounding youth, and even though I know that this is not a decision that you all are making based on results of the last election, I do think it's important that I point out that I did run in 2020, and despite the fact that I did not win that election, I feel like what I accomplished was significant, and there are at least ten thousand, close to ten thousand people here in the city who have already expressed a desire to see me here in this role, and so, you know, again, I want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I will turn the floor back over to you all.
Okay, thank you. My first question is, what personal attributes do you bring to this role?
Well, I think I addressed that a little bit, you know, in my opening statements, but I do think that I bring a unique perspective as someone who has personally experienced a lot of the big challenges that we're currently trying to address here in the city, you know, I think that there are a lot of great minds on city council currently, and I also think that it's really important that we have people who are actually experiencing these things, or super close to people who are, but in addition to that, I feel like I have the ability to get people mobilized, and I think that's been kind of evidenced through a lot of the local activism that I've done and through my city council run. I think that a lot of the challenges that we're seeing right now, they're issues that we're not going to be able to get fixed on our own, we have to be able to bring other people to the table and get people willing to show up and have these conversations with us, and I think I've kind of proven at this point that I have the ability to do that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez Jones has another question.
Thank you, Ms. Preston, for coming today.
Thank you.
In your opinion, what should be the city's top priorities in the next one to three years?
I think that our big priorities, definitely we have to do something to address the issue of housing insecurity here in the area, there is a lack of affordable housing for a few reasons, but then I also think that we have a responsibility to address the issue of poverty here in the city, and then of course, the gun violence issue, and ironically, I think that all of those things are very interconnected with one another, I think not just here in the state of, in the state of Virginia or in Roanoke City, but all throughout the country, when you look at crime maps, it's pretty evident that there is a direct connection between poverty and gun violence, the areas that have the most highly concentrated levels of poverty also tend to be the areas that are seeing the most gun violence, and so I really feel like if people have affordable places to live, and they have more money in their pockets, and they have, you know, better, they just, they have, if we're addressing the issue of poverty, I really think a lot of the other issues in the city kind of organically go away, and I think addressing this issue, you know, in addition to being good for the people who are experiencing the problem, it's good for the city as a whole, because I know for me personally, as a single mom, there have been a lot of instances where, like, I've had a weekend where my kids were with their grandparents, and my friends invited me out, and I would have loved to, but it just wasn't in my budget, and in, you know, staying in the house, my dollars are staying in the house, I'm not able to contribute to the local economy, and so I think when we're empowering people economically, we're giving them more money that they can spend, and that is good for local businesses as well.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bestbitch has the next question.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Preston, for stepping up and putting yourself forward for this position. My question is, how do you define progress for the city of Roanoke, and can you please give us a specific example of how you would advocate on a specific issue for the city?
Yeah, when I think-
Yeah, when I think, um, progress in the city of Roanoke, um, equity is always the word that comes to mind. You know, equity is actually in the city's strategic plan, so I know it's something that, you know, everyone here cares about. Um, and I really think that that's something we have to drive home. Um, as far as how we do that, I think it really looks like making every single decision, you know, not some of the decisions, but all of them, with the people, um, who are struggling the most in mind. You know, when I think of that word equity, I think about a race where, you know, everybody has the same distance to run, so that's fair, but not everybody is at the same starting line. And in order to make that fair, you have to be able to get those people to the same starting line, and so that means giving them a head start or giving them a boost. And so, if we really want to make this a more equitable city, we really have a responsibility to prioritize the people who are struggling the most, and that means thinking about them with every single decision that we make.
Sorry, I'm just fetching, I'm searching my notes. Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Councilmember Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. Thank you for coming and putting your name in to be considered. Uh, my question is, uh, as you may know, city of Roanoke is, uh, just like all the localities in the Commonwealth, is a council-manager form of government other than Richmond. And my question for you is, how would you define your role in relationship to the council and/or with the city administration?
Well, I think that the role of city council in general, um, you know, we, you all are the decision-makers, um, and even though you all are kind of the ones who are making the final decisions, I think it's important that you're making decisions alongside other people. Um, and so, what I believe that looks like is, um, just looking at the whole thing as a team, on every team, there are people who play different positions, um, no one position is more important than the others, they're different, um, but they're all contributing something, and so that means everybody has to work together for the same common goal. Um, it doesn't mean that we're always going to agree on everything, um, there probably will be a lot of instances where we don't, but I think that in those instances, it's important to come back, um, and remember that every single person here is here for the same reason, and that reason is that, you know, we all genuinely love and care about this city, and we want the best for it. And I think that finding that common ground, um, is what we can all use to make sure that even in those instances where we're not necessarily seeing eye to eye, we're able to meet somewhere in the middle to make the best possible decisions.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, uh, we'll go to our next question, and that will come from Councilmember Carr.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's good to see you. Thank you for being here. Um, the, the last two years, uh, in addition to everything else, have been extremely challenging. Please, as you reflect on that, share a challenge for Roanoke as we emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic.
Yeah, um, I think the big challenge, the big challenge that we're seeing right now is going to be the issue of housing, you know? We've, we've already kind of seen it, you know, from, you know, the, the homeless camps that we're seeing popping up all over the city, um, and things of that nature. Um, but I think that we're also starting to see more and more people, um, becoming displaced, um, due to issues that are no fault of their own. Um, sometimes it is, you know, investors purchasing properties and then doing renovations, and people have to leave, and then the prices of the, you know, apartments or the units that they're in get jacked up so high that the people who were forced out can't afford to move back in. I actually am personally experiencing that right now, um, and so that's actually one of the reasons that I made the decision to step forward on this appointment, because, you know, it is an issue that a lot of people in the city are currently dealing with, that I have firsthand knowledge of. Um, and so, you know, I think that housing in general, because of the pandemic, uh, it was an issue that people were struggling with, and I feel like it's only kind of getting exacerbated at this point, um, and so I think that really has to be one of the big challenges that we start tackling.
Thank you.
All right, our final question will come from the Vice Mayor.
Hi, Ms. Preston. Hello.
Good afternoon. My question is, how would you, how would you work to promote empowerment and reduce inequity among marginalized groups within the city?
I think that any time we're having conversations about marginalized, um, groups of people, um, and empowering them, it's really, really important that those people have a seat at the table. Um, we never want to be in a position where we're making decisions for someone as if we know what's best for them. They, we really need to find a way, um, to make sure that we're giving them a voice. Um, and you know, as I mentioned before, you know, with the issue of equity, um, I think that after we're having these conversations and really finding out what it is that they need, um, we have a responsibility to make sure that we are keeping them and their best interests, um, at the heart of every single decision that's made moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was the last question, uh, Ms. Preston. We're going to give you this time to, uh, share with us, ask any questions you may have, or share with us something that, that the interviewer didn't bring out. So, you can close with that.
Okay. Um, I think I really just want to, you know, stress the fact that I think, not just here in Roanoke City, but just everywhere on every city council, um, in existence, I think it's really, really important that there's a lot of diversity. And I think that Roanoke has done a really, really good job. You know, we currently have one of the most ethnically diverse city councils that we've ever had, um, and I think that's an incredible feat, but also, I think it's important to acknowledge that ethnic diversity alone is not always enough to solve problems. Um, we need diversity from people who have lots of different life experiences and who come from lots of different walks, so that everybody in the city feels like they have someone there who, who gets it, who understands what they're going through. Um, and you know, as I mentioned, I, I am a single mother, um, I'm thirty-five years old, I'm a millennial, I have an astronomical amount of student loan debt, um, I'm currently experiencing housing insecurity at the moment. I have literally three months to find somewhere to move me and my kids to, as do a lot of other people here in the city. And so, I feel like I represent a demographic of the city, um, who really need representation the most right now, um, and I feel like it is also a demographic of the city who doesn't currently have a whole ton of representation. Um, and so, um, I guess that's pretty much all that I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Lately, we were way ahead of schedule after two, so, uh, we got some time before our next output is here. Don't go too far away now.
Just going to run over to the mall and come back. She was just going to run to the mall. Amazon? Yeah, I was, I ordered, I ordered something, my husband saw it, he said, "You ordered something?" It's not going to take you that long yet, so you just got to go in and pick up a few things and come right back. Yeah. I'll go after the next one.
Where are my chips and peppers? No, your first thought is, I really need some more salad. I've tried to drink myself. Where's my celery and peanut butter? Drink myself to think that way. Give me a break. What's my smoothie? My kale smoothie?
I had a smoothie for breakfast this morning. It's like kale smoothie.
I love kale. But I love it sauteed with garlic and raisins. Well, I'm not insmaining.
No.
It's something. It's a. And I like it, I like it charred a little bit. So it kind of seals all the flavors together.
I'm not, uh, I'm not actually crazy about eating salad.
Not just raw.
But I grew up being, my grandfather, my grandparents always said kale very often. And my grandfather actually raised this in his garden. He put mayonnaise on it. Oh, kale.
I don't know what mayonnaise is. I'm not sure.
Well, most of them are like a lemon or a little pepper or something.
Orange dressing. Now, orange dressing, I like pizza. Not every kind of pizza, but pepperoni or sausage. Yeah. Just dip it in. I can't really tell. No.
No, this is my primary, my doctor. I want him to do it, have an MRI schedule. I want him to look at the tissues and not just keep looking at the bone. Sometimes you gotta take it into your own. All right. But everybody else should probably pop up here early.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Price.
At least you're here.
Nita, be ready.
My apologies.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, Nita, uh, thank you for putting your name forward to, uh, get back in the fold for this position. Uh, we appreciate you stepping up to the plate. And what we have is a list of questions that each one of us will ask you one. And, uh, but you can start off with two minutes of just sharing with us, uh, your thoughts and, pretty much anything you want to share to open up as we go forward.
Well, well, let me just start off by saying thank you. Um, I appreciate this opportunity and, um, to be quite honest, I would have never thought that I would be standing before you in this capacity. However, um, I do appreciate the, um, this opportunity. And I want to say also that I was so encouraged to see so many people willing to step forward to, um, to serve our city. And I think that says a tremendous amount about who we are as a people in the Star City. So to all of those who have said, yes, I, I do want to come forward and help our city out in a time of need. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, I have the first question. And my question is, what personal attributes do you bring to this role?
Well, I guess that sort of plays into, uh, why I made the decision to come forward. Let, let me say that I was encouraged by, surprisingly, a lot of folks who called or emailed me or text me and said, Nita, um, the city should have you back. So to that end, I, I guess, from the standpoint that I've only been gone off of council for a year and some change, I feel like I bring some consistency, some continuity, some stability. Uh, hopefully there's not too much that I have missed that I can't contribute to positively, uh, giving back to, to the city. And then also, um, just a personal level, I, I like to pride myself on being a good listener, to be the kind of person who listens to both sides of any and all issues and to be able to take, um, to take a position that is, uh, in the, in the best interest and bring forth some consist, consistence. Cons, that's not the word I'm looking for.
All right.
Bringing everybody together.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez Jones has the next question.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Price. In your opinion, what should be the city's top priorities in the next one to three years?
I think one of the, several things. Um, first of all, I, I feel very proud of our city because I do feel like we are on the right course. I will say this though, that right now I think, uh, the main priority and thing that is in the minds of so many is to negate this perception of safety in our city. That, I feel that knowing what this council and, and what staff is working on, that I know is something that is not something that was ever put aside and that it is consistently worked on. But I do feel like that, that's a priority that we need to continue to approach. I'm going to sound like a broken record, but y'all know what I'm going to say. We have to continue to focus on our youth because if we do not pay attention and make certain that the needs of our children are not met, and it's a, it's a group effort. It's not just the school board that has realm over the needs of our, our students. It's something that I know that all of us take very seriously and feel very, um, passionate in making certain that we are working collaboratively together. Thank you.
All right. The next question will come from Councilman Bestbitch.
And excuse me, did something down just not quite the wrong way? Or not quite the right way? Good to see you.
Good to see you, dear.
My question is, how do you define progress for the city of Roanoke? And please give us an example of how you would advocate for progress on a specific issue for the city.
That's something that, thank God, as far as progress for this city, we've done, we're working on it. It's never something that is definitively finished. It is always a work in progress. Uh, you've heard me say before, you can't address what you don't first acknowledge. We acknowledge that we have, um, a challenge in transportation. We acknowledge we have, uh, a challenge with affordable housing. We acknowledge that we have, uh, a challenge, excuse me, in, um, in public safety. And in all of those areas, Roanoke City is working to address those things. We, we see it spelled out in the strategic plan and we see it in some of the boards and commissions that are put in place. And, you know, certainly the, the fact that we have our Equity and Empowerment, um, Commission that has been put in place. These are all, I mean, that, that's just a small taste of the progress that we're making and continue to make because it's never finished. There's always another challenge around, around the corner.
And how do you approach advocating for any of this? What's your, uh, strategy or approach, whatever word you want to use, to, to being an advocate?
Uh, I would say the fact that on a personal level, I've, I've stayed very active and busy, even though I've not been, uh, a member of, um, city council. But I have participated in, um, in our youth service providers forum, I guess you could call it that. And that's been going on for, for several, several months. As you all know, I'm still very active with our youth service citizens board and making certain, and, and here again, we always have these challenges, but our progress has to be championed and we have to continue to communicate all the good things that our city is making. I, I think we all, all of us in this room, we all know that, um, getting the word and the message out to those who, who really need to hear it, that's an ongoing challenge as well. But like I said, we're making progress because we have services and resources in place.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, Councilmember Moon Reynolds?
Hi, Nita.
Hey there. Um, my question, I, I'm gonna try to rephrase it somewhat because of your 12 years on council and, uh, having been vice mayor as well. And as you are aware of our, um, structure for council, city manager, form of government. So I'm just going to rephrase it somewhat and just ask, how did, how do you, how did you view your role as, uh, relationship as it was as a council member? And/or working with the city administration?
Oh goodness, where do I start?
There you go.
Yeah. I guess the first place I would start is, um, trying to be a voice for the voiceless.
Okay.
It's so important, you know, and, 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 and the city has sometimes been criticized that we don't have specific precincts. But because we represent our city at large, it is so important that we make certain that we hear all issues and concerns from, 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 throughout the city. And then to that end, to work with our sister jurisdictions to make sure that we're communicating with one another and try as to the best of our ability to work together in a way that is cohesive and productive. And then the other, um, role I would say is being out there. Being seen. Being able to, to, to not be afraid to hear what people have to say. Y'all have heard, heard me say the story of when I was in church and somebody passed me a note in the collection, um, uh, plate because they were worried about an issue that was coming up, very unconventional, the, the method of conveying that issue. But the fact that that young man had the courage to say, Anita is my representative and I want her to know what's on my heart and what's on my mind. So I would say, and then just, um, when we go, when we go out to, to, to our conferences and things to bring back those best practices, find out what's going on in, in other areas so that we can in turn, um, take the best of the best. And then of course, you know, Roanoke has been known to come up with some of its own initiatives that other folks like to piggyback off of us and say, this is what Roanoke did. Does that answer your question?
Yes. No, you, you did, you did. You gave me some good ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cobb.
Hello, Ms. Price. It's good to see you.
Good afternoon.
So, um, you actually served on council during, um, the heart of the pandemic. Uh, so you know a lot of the challenges that we faced. But as we're emerging on this side of it, um, share a challenge you see for Roanoke as we kind of move post-pandemic.
To encourage folks to get back to work. I think that is, and it's not just, uh, a challenge here in Roanoke alone. We see it and hear about it across the nation. We, we, and I still feel like we gotta, just like, you know, this kind of thing. We, we still need to make certain that we're keeping some, some mitigations in place that are not going to have us go back to, um, pandemic times. It has certainly been a challenge. And then the other thing, I've wanted to make sure that I, I, I someplace say today, we, we've got to continue to encourage our children. Our babies are hurting. I, I, I know of several young people that are, they're struggling. And as much as what we can all do individually and collectively to, to help our schools and to help our children, the students, the, then hopefully we can get back to pre-pandemic times a lot quicker. But it is certainly, it is an issue, it's a problem that, um, all hands have to be on deck. It is not anything that any one person or one agency can do alone. And it, I, I will say that I feel, I, I feel good that we do work, try to work together collaboratively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, uh, Vice Mayor has the last question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is last word. Hi, Ms. Price. Thank you so much for, for stepping up and, and putting your, your name in, in the hat. Um, we appreciate that. My question is, how would you work to promote empowerment and reduce inequity among marginalized groups within our city?
I, I think that is something that, um, I can say without any hesitation. I've been trying to do, um, always, even before sitting on city council. And that's what I mean when I say that, that Roanoke City recognizes, if you have a concern, then you've got to put measures in place to address it. And having, and I have to look at it because sometimes I forget the words fixed up, the establishment of the Equity and Empowerment, um, Commission, the board, that was tremendous. To be able to say, and I have said this to other people in other, you know, walks, the fact that this city wants to look at every department through that lens of equity, that's huge. That's huge. Because as, as I've said before, you cannot address what you don't first acknowledge. And just having that kind of, um, venue that you can take into consideration, let's look at this group of people. For example, um, what's happening in the Melrose Rugby area? What can we do to, um, increase visi, the positive visibility of that community? What can we do to make sure that our children, that all kids, no matter what zip code they're in, that they are all receiving a fair shake? And, and let me also say this as well, that, um, as we're going, what, um, Councilman Cobb was saying about coming out of the pandemic, you know, we all also need to make certain that we keep in mind that not everybody has the same resources. So that's another, you know, that, that, that prong of equity that we have to keep in mind. I, I know everybody has heard, you know, the challenges of transportation, the challenges of childcare, the challenges of, um, being prepared because getting that skilled workforce in place, those are the kinds of things that we must continuously keep our eye on. And, um, I can say without a, without any, any hesitation that I know our city is working towards those, those issues and those challenges.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Thank you.
All right. In fact, that concludes all of the questions we have. We got, uh, give you a couple of minutes to either ask us a question or share with us anything that you want to say we didn't ask.
Well, like I said before, I appreciate the opportunity to come back if chosen to serve my city. I love Roanoke. Okay, see, I'm gonna have to stop talking because this city means a lot to all of us. We're a beautiful city. We're a compassionate, caring city. And now's the time for us to rally together. It's like family. And when you've got a problem with the family, what does the family do? The family comes together. So I thank you and God bless you all and I'll see you on the other side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pretty is not here, is he?
I believe he is.
Oh, I think so.
I'm, I'm, I'm Texas.
Okay. While you're going, I'm gonna take a break here. How you doing today?
I'm doing well, Mayor Lee.
All right. Thank you for putting your name forward to, to apply for this position. And we look forward to interviewing you. We have a series of questions that we'll ask and, and we'll give you a chance to say some things at the end. And first of all, we're, right now, we'll let you begin with two minutes of just introducing yourself and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, members of council. For everyone who's watching at home and does not know me yet, my name is Luke Pretty. I work for State Senator John Edwards and I've lived in the Roanoke Valley for a number of years. I, I'd like to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to interview, to serve alongside you on council. I stand before you today to make the case for why I am the best person to fill this vacancy, to make this case both to you and the people that you represent, why I should be given the responsibilities that are enumerated in this office for the remainder of the year. I look forward to your questions and aim to provide thoughtful, intentional responses that provide insight to my character, competence, and courage to take on this role. I'm ready for your first question whenever you are, but I would like to let you all know that I have had a COVID test in the past 48 hours and I passed it. So that's not why, that's why I'm not wearing a mask today.
All right. Thank you. I have a first question, Luke, and that is, what personal attributes do you bring to this role?
Thank you for your question, Mayor Lee. The first attribute, I'm punctual, I'm, I'm early, at least right now. I'm incredibly detailed and will do the work in order to, to get something done. I'll do the research behind the scenes and I'll, I'll be prepared. I have courage, the courage to stand here today, the courage to, to push back on things that I question, and the courage to fight for what I think is right. I have more of a statement that I'm gonna provide that relates to this. As much as I wanted to serve in this capacity a year ago, a little over a year ago when this vacancy was up, I knew I wasn't the right person at this time for what the city needed. Through this process, I think the city recognized that Councilwoman Vivian Sanchez Jones was the right person. But of the applicants interviewed here today, I believe I am the right person at this time. Each of you brings something unique to council with differing backgrounds in public safety and corrections, small business ownership and Home Healthcare Administration, student support, the faith-based community, and service to the city of Roanoke with decades of tenured experience, both behind the dais and beside it with Ms. Moon Reynolds. Together, you all make a team focused on the best interests of the city and the people that you represent. When I look at the empty seat that's left there today, I see an important role for me. Over the next nine months, council has many important tasks ahead of them, the first and foremost being the adoption of a budget that provides essential services, addresses pay compression, and investment solutions throughout all of Roanoke, solutions that invest in youth and provide opportunities for growth while addressing shortages in law enforcement, especially during summer months when data points to higher incidences of gun violence. If selected to serve, I look forward to listening, engaging with the community, as city management works to take on targeted actions to update the strategic plan. And finally, when I think of personal attributes, I believe I bring a particularly unique set of skills when we'll come to developing the 2023 legislative agenda for the upcoming session of the General Assembly. As y'all know, today, the special session met in Richmond because the governor has ongoing priorities with the budget and the rest of the General Assembly has to decide what they think is the best direction for the Commonwealth. That is something that I work in daily. Another attribute that relates to that, I think I'm one of few people who will spend all of their time working on that and will spend their extra time going back to watch sessions of council. Not sure I can say that for too many other people. Back again, I do believe I possess the courage and commitment to take on this responsibility and please accept my sincere appreciation to be considered. I'm ready for the next question.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez Jones has the next question.
In your opinion, what should be the city's top priority in the next one to two year, three years, I'm sorry?
In my opinion, over the next one to three years.
Mm-hmm. Top priority.
To prepare for this interview, a lot of what I looked at was what's over the next one year.
Okay.
I think when we look at the next three years, that's something that we'll see over time, but a lot of the issues that we're seeing today, I don't think we could anticipate too long ago. A lot of what we're looking at today were issues that came up in the strategic plan and are things that we update on an annual basis. I think a lot of these issues we're going to hear from the citizens of Roanoke as much as we're going to hear from the people that serve on council. Those are issues around public safety, those are issues around housing, and one that, both of those always point back to our neighborhoods and what are we doing to continue to develop them? When I last interviewed for this vacancy, something that I brought up was the idea of having a grocer downtown, somewhere walkable. And when you look at the issues that are happening today with the rising gas tax, the economy inflation, how much people can make, you know, I think the president has even been quoted saying that in Europe, people can walk to get their food. We don't have that opportunity here. And thank you for your question. I'm ready for the next one.
All right. Councilmember Bestbitch has the next question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Luke, thank you for stepping up, bringing your name forward. My question is, how do you define progress for the city of Roanoke? And please give us an example of how you would advocate for progress for our city on a specific issue.
Well, progress broadly can just be improvement. Last time I was here, I believe I spoke about the reports and the focus that the city manager has on focusing on data and looking at where we were, where we are now, and where we need to be and how we move forward in that aspect. But I thought about this question as preparing and heard it from the other people today and something else came to mind. And I think that progress is really, you know, recognizing some of our own faults and sometimes when we miss the mark. I serve as the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and I'm incredibly proud of all the work that they've done, especially with the leadership of Director Michael Clark. But sometimes when they take actions that the community responds to, they take ownership of that. They recognize what steps they need to take and what improvements need to be done. And ultimately, I think it leads to better relations and better operations in the city overall. Thank you for your question.
You're welcome.
Now, our next question will come from councilmember Moon Reynolds.
Hi, Luke. My question is, the city of Roanoke has the council city manager form of government. How would you define your role in relationship to the council and/or with the city administration?
Well, if I'm selected to serve and I was a member of council, my role with council would be to interact with, with all of you all. But ultimately, how that relates to working with the city manager and promotion of the agenda of the city is the city council only operates when they operate together, when they make decisions as one. Now, they may not always be unanimous, although it's, I think that progress can be made with it. Sometimes there's progress made when there aren't unanimous decisions that go together. But council has to develop a vision. They, they look to the manager and they direct him with, and, and the city administration with what needs to be done. And in turn, the city listens to the vision that council has, that they're bringing from the citizens around them, and brings them information, informs them on what they need to know in order to make those decisions. And that relationship ultimately leads to progress for the city. So thank you for your question.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Our next question will come from councilmember Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Luke, for being here today. We are emerging from the COVID pandemic. As we are doing so, share with us a challenge you see for Roanoke post pandemic that we need to focus on.
Post pandemic, as it relates to COVID, it's, it's realizing that this will not be endemic. This may be something that we deal with much like the flu every year, prepare people to make sure that they're informed and willing to, to get a shot like the flu shot, if that's the direction that we're going. But I really think that when it relates to coming out of COVID, the issues that we're gonna see are not a direct result of the negative health consequences that were caused, but more relate to our economy. As I spoke about earlier, the raise, the rising gas tax, the rising inflation, I reached out to a number of people in the city when I told them that I'd be interviewing for this, and every single person used it to volunteer as an opportunity to express what is affecting them, what is challenging them daily. And one that I'll share with you all now is just related to the personal property tax. They said that they, their mother passed away this past year, they're on assistance and they have a limited source of income. And as the property tax continues to rise, their means and their ability to meet an end become tighter and tighter. And they said, whatever you can do to express that to them, to make sure that that is heard, that, that's all really they cared to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final question will come from the vice mayor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Pretty.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for, for putting your name in the hat. We appreciate it. I'm gonna take off this mask. My question is, how would you work to promote empowerment and reduce inequity among marginalized groups within the city?
Well, in order for me to work, invest, empower the community to promote marginalized communities is really to support the work of what's already being done by leaders like you and Bill Bestbitch on the Equity Empowerment Advisory Board. It'd be wrong for me to say that I know what's best for all groups of people. People need a seat at the table in order to express things for themselves, but not everyone even is willing to be there. They want someone else to be a voice for them. We need to reach out to those leaders, make sure that all stakeholders and groups are informed so that they have an opportunity to have their voices heard. When I think about equity more broadly, you know, I think about, what is it? And I just think about the accomplishments that the city's been able to get done. I think that it's equitable to rename a building that administers justice and to some unjustly for decades, to, to name it after a civil rights icon with Oliver Hill Justice Center. I think that it's equitable to take down a monument that represents something so dark and full of hatred to so many people, and not everyone, and to rename that after a person who had something robbed from them. So that people living in the community, when they look and they see these names, they are just names of something, but they represent something so much more. They represent an opportunity and what they have the ability to achieve. And I do think that there were good decisions made there with the plaza being divided and being named to both promote freedom and a new icon.
Thank you, Mr. Pretty.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Luke, that concludes all of the questions. And so right now, we have about two minutes time that you can either share with us something that we didn't ask or any questions that you want to ask us.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, members of council. First, I'm sure that Senator Edwards makes sure that, I said, to make sure you all know that I will do a good job, but also just to say thank you, that I'm honored to have had the opportunity today. And that there were 16 applicants and among the many difficult decisions that council has to make, y'all had to narrow down that field today and y'all have more difficult decisions ahead of you in the future. With that said, I do hope that through your deliberations, you all will find that I am best suited to fill this position. I believe the other applicants all bring unique attributes to the table, especially the former council member, but I, I don't believe I'm going to need much to get up to speed. I've paid attention to council at every turn and watched it from this side. I think I'm ready to watch it from that side. And I hope I can help all of you do what you need to promote the city's agenda. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Kevin Berry is our next applicant. I don't think he's here yet. Thank you for putting your name forward to leave the center for this. And we got a serious question. He's going to ask you. But in the beginning, we want you to take a couple of minutes and just introduce yourself to council.
Sure, I would love to do that. First of all, I want to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to be here. I haven't seen any of the other interviewers or candidates for this position. But from what I can tell and the people that I know, the talent of Roanoke is shining bright, and there's no doubt about that. So, I am honored to be a part of this here today. So, I wanted to first thank you all for the opportunity to be up here. But I do want to start with this important part. I believe in Roanoke. When I moved down here about three and a half years ago, coming on four years, I came down from Baltimore, Maryland, and I almost immediately knew that I had to live here. I have had the pleasure since living here to get to know the people that are from this great city, what they mean, how hard they work, and how much they care about others. And especially how much that they show, how much care and compassion they show to a newcomer, because I certainly didn't know much about downtown or where to go when I first got here. But this is a special place. And so, I am just honored to be here, to be a part of what this city has to offer. I think what we have is a city with a lot of potential. So, to be a part of that, to even be part of the discussion, is such an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have the first question. And that is, what personal attributes do you bring to this role?
Well, for those of you who, and I think all of you did, for those of you who read my interest letter, I have passion. I have worked in the nonprofit, anti-poverty nonprofit arena for almost 10 years now. That has been driven by passion. I have passion for the work that I do. I have passion for the people that I call family and friends. I am nothing short of committed to who I serve and why I do it. And so, number one, it is passion. Number two, it's commitment. When I see something that needs to be done, I make sure I see it through. That's why I'm still working in the anti-poverty field for 10 years now. That seems to be something that never quite ends, but you don't give up. So, that adds another attribute that I think I bring to this, which is, I'm not going to stop. I'm going to keep going. When I see an issue that needs to be solved, I'm going to keep going, and I'm going to encourage my colleagues, if I have the fortune to be here, to continue going as well.
Okay, thank you. Our next question is coming from Councilmember Sanchez Jones.
Thank you for coming out today. In your opinion, what should be the city's top priorities in the next one to three years?
You know, I have a bit of a bias here, because, again, I work in the anti-poverty field. I see people that need help. And so, when I see that, it's hard for me to imagine some of the bigger changes that people talk about, say, development or other things, but to ignore some of those folks that already feel like they don't have much hope. For me, when I see folks that are sleeping on the sidewalk, I say, we need to fix that before we can move on to anything else. We need to make sure that we are taking care of the people that have honestly lost trust in government sometimes, that have lost trust in nonprofits sometimes. We need to make sure that those people are taken care of first. So, first priorities first. I would, number one, I would make sure that those who need our help in this community are cared for. And that is homelessness, that is addiction, that is poverty in our community. We need to focus on those issues first. And once we're able to focus on those, then we can move on. Now, when I say that, what I also mean is, is I mean that we can focus, say, if we're going to work on issues about poverty or homelessness, well, that's going to include job skills training, job growth, encouraging companies to come here and hire. So, all of that is built on bringing those up that may have been left behind.
All right, our next question comes from Councilmember Beszich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and nice to meet you, Mr. Berry. Thank you for putting your name forward for this. My question is, how do you define progress for the city of Roanoke? And please give us a specific example of how you would advocate in the city for some issue.
So, for me, progress would be a, it would be a visual, right? It's that as you are driving down the street, you don't say, that's wrong, that shouldn't be happening. Now, that can be a number of things. That could be homelessness, that could also be in the idea that something happened without community approval, right? That what we're doing is, is that we are constantly having conversations about how to make improvements in our society, that things aren't done, and suddenly, we're asking ourselves, well, that's not right, how did that happen? So, progress for me is more about the conversations that we have. Are we a community that is built on conversation? Are we a community that is built on making sure that we all know where each other stands? We understand that we have differences, and even though we have those differences, that we can work together to make a solution.
Thank you. All right, our next question comes from Councilmember Moon Reynolds.
How are you? Thank you for coming.
Sure.
My question, excuse me, my question deals with the city council form of government. I know you come from Baltimore, but in the Commonwealth, I'm sure you're familiar with the charter, our charter that says council city manager form of government. How would you define your role in relationship to the council and with the city administration?
So, I would define my role as a consensus builder. So, I'm, as I just kind of alluded to in the previous question, I'm a person that sees the importance in recognizing that we have differences, but also moving forward with those differences and coming to a common goal, which is the betterment of the city of Roanoke. And so, that is what I would bring. And, you know, people may differ on their views on how a government should run, but I don't think a government runs right if it's not done on consensus.
All right, our next question comes from Councilmember Carr.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Berry. Please share a challenge you see for Roanoke as we emerge from COVID-19.
You know, a challenge that I would say we're going to have is, in terms of housing and in terms of homelessness, we need to make sure that we are making the proper investments in transitional housing, in affordable housing, in treatment facilities. We need to encourage conversation about how we can make sure that more people don't end up on the street. You know, just the other day, I was looking at the point in time count in terms of number of homeless individuals, and we've actually cut that number, City of Roanoke has cut that number in half since 2008, which is amazing. But the other notable statistic that I saw there is that we had, in 2008, we had seven homeless individuals that were sleeping on the street. And now, we have about 50. Well, that was, sorry, that was right before the ordinance went into effect, but that was 50. And so, what can we do to make sure that we have the proper supports for these individuals? And so, our greatest challenge is making sure that those supports are there and that we continue to have the patience and understanding that whatever issues we face coming out of the pandemic, they're not going to go away tomorrow. And so, stressing that there is patience, it can't be stressed enough. And I think that, you know, if I can add one more thing, Ms. Moon Reynolds, I did want to say that another thing that I'll bring is, I'll be knocking on doors all year round, right? And I mean that in the sense of, I think that people have to know that you're there and you're listening, and you're doing that every single day. Sometimes what can happen is, is that the door knocking stops after the election. And that won't happen with me. I know many of you, I see you out, and you're in the community, and I commend you for that. But I'll be somebody as well who will be out there and do that hard work that needs to be done.
All right, our final question comes from the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Berry, it's my pleasure to meet you. I have not met you before, and thank you for putting your name in the hat. We appreciate you coming forward. My question is, how would you work to promote empowerment and reduce inequity among marginalized groups within the city?
Thank you for that question. You know, I think that, I was actually having a discussion about this the other day. I've had the pleasure to participate in Leadership Roanoke Valley down by the Chamber of Commerce. That's a fantastic program, and I've learned a lot. And I was having a conversation the other day about the importance of having community centers. And community centers, what I mean when I say that is, is that each neighborhood, in an ideal world, each neighborhood would have grocery stores. They would have a health clinic, they'd have a bank, they'd have retail. They would have walkability so they can get to those things without having to rely on public transportation. So, what I think is important is, is that that's how you start to reduce some of that. That's how you start to help other communities build from the inside out. And that's where some of that special stuff happens.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Berry. That concludes all of our questions. And now, you have a two-minute period to share with us some things that we didn't ask, that you want us to know or ask any questions.
You know, I did want to share just a couple ideas in terms of spending and budget initiatives that might give you an idea of where I would stand on some other issues. So, I might take the full two minutes. I don't know. But a few things. Number one, I think it's important that we're going to continue investing in Number one, I think it's important that we're going to continue investing in technology, medicine, healthcare. Corillian, I know, even in the short time that I've been down here, has been spectacular for this area. We need to continue that. Number two, we need to continue funding, and in fact, increased funding for vocational schools. What this will do is, this will bring investments from different companies here to this area because all of that talent will be built in. So that's Virginia Western, that is, other schools in the region that might be able to, and in the city, that might be able to bring those kinds of jobs here. Transportation, this was a topic at Leadership Roanoke Valley when we were talking about Let's get some covers over the bus stops. You know, small things like that that are going to make that difference. Let's have discussions on the easy things that we can do. I was pleasantly surprised with the Third Street Station. I think that it's very easy to navigate, and I am happy that what we have there is, I think, going to be a very good thing for our city, but I think that we can absolutely improve our transportation systems. I just spoke previously about growing communities from the inside out. I think that's important. I think community centers are key. I spoke about affordable housing, why I think that's important. It's because it reduces recidivism and it keeps folks from falling back into homelessness, and that is of the utmost importance, because I can tell you, when you fall into homelessness, it doesn't turn out well from there. And you know, I truly think that Roanoke is one of the greatest cities in the country. And I mean that as somebody who came from Baltimore. I love that place, but man, when I pulled in here, was I blown away. This is a small town with big city amenities. I know it sounds like I'm giving a little spiel for the city, but I promise you, this is how I feel. I would be honored to represent this city. I hope that you'll consider me, and I thank you again for letting me be here.
Thank you. Mr. Raycon Moore has withdrawn his application, so therefore, that concludes all of our applications. I want to thank all of the candidates for coming down and being interviewed today, and again, I want to say for our listening and viewing public that no official action will be taken by the council on today regarding filling the vacancies. And there will be a public hearing this evening at 7:00 to hear the views of citizens on the candidates that we interviewed today. And so, and then council will announce the successful candidate at 2:00 PM meeting on April 18th. All right? So with that, council will be in recess until 7:00 here in the council chamber. Thank you.